Good evening. I call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners regular meeting of June the seventeenth. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Such a nice evening. I'm looking right out at the sunset. So we also have with us the Clerk of the Board and our county administrator. Welcome to both of you. And we have been invited to the city of Montgomery. We will get with both of those gentlemen in just a few minutes, but we'll move forward to our first part of our agenda, which is always a silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance. I would ask that you just think about some of the violence that has taken place again with some of our young people. And so just to think about them as we go into a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We're going to move forward and we'll speak to Mayor Chris DeBrazzi and the City Manager, Brian Riblet. First of all, I'd just like to thank you so much for accommodating us and allowing us to come into your city and to share some of the exciting things that are going on. So you can just take it away.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Madam President, Commissioner Drehouse, Commissioner Reese, a virtual warm welcome to the city of Montgomery. I wish we were in person this evening. Understand why we can't be, but we'll all be back to it really soon. We obviously appreciate the great partnership we've had with Hamilton County over the years and all the career you have been doing and are doing for our overall community. We greatly appreciate it. So this evening, we have just put together a quick PowerPoint we'd like to cover with you. And what we're going to look at is we're going to do a COVID recap and a CARES Act, what we use our dollars on. We're going to just cover some of the exciting capital projects we have going on in the city. Most of those infrastructure related, obviously. We're going to talk about economic development. I know a few of you were here for our groundbreaking back in two thousand and nineteen, believe it or not. We'll give an update on that project. And then we'll talk about engagement. We have a diversity inclusion committee that's doing wonderful things here. We want to bring you up to speed on. And then we'll talk about the door we put in place, about bringing the community together. We'll kind of close with just some some other good things happening around the community. So if that works for you guys, we're going to jump right into our PowerPoint.
Fine.
Appreciate it. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Riblet.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. We're going to start with COVID nineteen, just a quick recap. And like all of you, we're so thankful that the light is kind of at the end of the tunnel. We're getting back to some sense of normalcy. And you know, I always touch on this, that at the end of two thousand and twenty, I heard a lot of people would say, we just couldn't wait for this year to be over with and get two thousand and twenty behind us. And I remember the council meeting saying, you know, I just don't feel that way. We did a lot of great things in two thousand and twenty at the city of Montgomery. Some of those included honoring our healthcare workers for all the work that they did. As a city council and city staff, we delivered over six hundred lunches to employees at the Bethesda North, Twin Lakes, Care Corps, Senior Facility, Nuttall Brook Senior Facility, and all of our terrific workers at Kroger here in Montgomery. We did a Turn Montgomery Blue campaign where our city was lit up in blue. Again, this is to honor all those healthcare workers and frontline workers. A year ago, for July fourth, we knew we couldn't have a traditional parade. We got creative and we came up with what we called a reverse July fourth parade, where we partnered with Sycamore Schools and used their parking lot. And we had the parade stationary and we had folks drive through. And we had over a thousand people. So I'm waiting for over two hours to drive for our parade. And that garnered some national attention. And so we did some really, really cool stuff last year in spite of the pandemic. And that just created some opportunities for us to continue to build a community here in Montgomery. Just touching real quickly on the highlights of the COVID cases here, we had, as of May fifteenth, eleven hundred and thirty-eight reported cases in Montgomery. And that's about ten percent of our community. And it was fairly widespread throughout the community. So probably similar to most other communities around us. That peak time was November of last year and then through the early spring of two thousand and twenty-one. And then finally, the CARES dollars. We're so thankful that Hamilton County took the approach that you all did and distributed those funds. And we were so thankful for that. And we use a big portion of that to just as a pass through to our local businesses. And just a couple of quotes here from some of our smaller businesses that they were so thankful. So the bulk of that went to, again, be whether twenty-five hundred dollar or a five thousand dollar business relief grant for small businesses. We use the funds to put ionization equipment on all of our HGC units and all of our city buildings. We installed touchless faucets in all of our city buildings and all of our city parks. We bought sterilization equipment and a lot of other signage and PPE equipment is, I'm sure, quite quite similar to what everybody else was doing as well. But again, we just want a big, a big thank you to the support that you gave us with those CARES funds through Hamilton County. And I'm going to quit quickly touch on a couple of capital projects that are going on. And the first one being, you should be very familiar with this one. This is our roundabout at Ronald Reagan in Montgomery Road. And the mayor's going to touch on the development project that's adjacent to this. But absent the support from Hamilton County, the commissioners and everyone in Hamilton County and OKI and ODOT, this wouldn't be possible. The tremendous partnership that we have allowed us to move forward on this legacy project, this transformational project, not only for Montgomery, but for the entire region. And we're nearing, you know, we're nearing the end. It's been a long haul and we are getting close to getting this completed, this roundabout at Montgomery. Just a quick overview here of the site now. As you can see, this used to be the overpass and this has all been filled in here. We're getting very close to having this done. We're nearing what's called Phase Five, which will be the final completion and build out of the actual roundabout. We're using that old bypass here for parking right now for the construction site. And it's working very well. So it's anticipated that we will be done and opened up completely by the mid to late August, around the twenty-first is what we're targeting for. And as the mayor indicated, we're going to certainly get some invites out here soon. We'd like to have some, a little bit of a ribbon cutting, if you will, ceremony of all the work, the tremendous work that went into making this happen. And so we'd certainly want you to be a part of that celebration when we open this roundabout up here later this summer. And then finally, one other project I'll talk about, this is broad roundabouts. We have another site in Montgomery, Deerfield and Piper. It's a four-way intersection currently. Piper, as you probably know, is a direct route to Bethesda North Hospital and one of two level three trauma units in the city of Cincinnati or in and around Cincinnati. We've been working at this for quite some time, too, and against some great partnerships that we've had. And most recently, I know County Engineer Mr. Beck is on the line. And we've been working with them on a Hamilton County Transportation Improvement District grant for this project as well. So again, a lot of the things we do would not be possible without tremendous support from all of you in Hamilton County. And we certainly appreciate that.
I'm going to turn it over to the mayor now to talk about some exciting economic development projects.
All right. Now we're going to talk about about the future. We're going to start with the Montgomery Quarter Project. So at the upper left here, you see our roundabout project that Brian just showed you the picture of. Again, all this land right here was what we acquired from Hamilton County. So again, we greatly thank you for working for us, for bringing this project to fruition. The other piece of this, which is way under construction right now, is parking structures right here, parking structures here, as well as two B office buildings, steel is in the air, believe it or not, coming along nicely. Another nice addition to that is we are now signed up with a boutique hotel right here, really to give a place for the people who who come to Montgomery, a place to stay in Montgomery, and really boost all of our restaurants on more than just residence and local use. So it's a great thing, great additions going on. So in all told, we're about two hundred and fifty million dollars of development here, about two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of office, about twenty thousand square feet of retail, about a hundred and forty apartments, about sixty-ish condominiums in both phases. So the Phase One, which ends right here, as you could tell by Brian's earlier photograph, this is all under construction right now. So thirteen hundred jobs, economic development for the region. So a great thing for all of us. You know, we're trying to diversify our economy. Have a lot of large employers. We're going to get a lot of smaller, medium employers. So that's still the part of this project that's very important to us, the city, and quite frankly, the region. Just give you a few pictures. Part of this is also a pocket park that we're going to program. You know, obviously, this is, I'll call it the minute, the mini fountain square. We're trying to bring residents together here, have our farmer's market here, have music here, really programmed to bring the people together. And not only benefit this project, but our existing historic downtown, right? It's all about working together to make this happen. So there's great things underway. Next, as I talked about the hotel, so you see just a little bit of image here is the hotel sitting out here. This is all on the public plaza I was referring to, that we were going to program. In the background, to give you a sense, those are the apartments we're talking about, something to get the empty nesters to stay here with spending power, but also get some of the younger millennials here. So we can get them hooked on Montgomery. That's what that's what it's about. So that's kind of the Montgomery Quarter Project. Just on the other side of Montgomery, up north of Tucson, five Bethesda North. We are so fortunate to have that here in our city. Last year, they finished an eighty million dollar project that was financed by a large donation by Harold Thomas, Eugene, Eugene and Harold Thomas Comprehensive Care Center. That that project is fully open and operational. Now they're back doing another large expansion externally, but also internally to continue to increase the care here. So another great partner we have in our city, another large employer as well, as you can imagine. And who can't complain about having that much great care so close to home for all of our residents and everybody around us? Next, our Sycamore Schools. As we say, people move here for the schools and they stay here for the char. About two years ago, we had a bond levy, about a hundred and twenty million dollar bond levy that was passed to really upgrade all of our schools that were fifty-plus years old, by the way. So they're past their useful life. So what you see here is that EH Green School, which is in the city of Montgomery and in the city of Blue Ash. But they're saving a portion of the building, but also a large portion is being constructed. And it's it's actually under construction now. We broke ground, the ribbon groundbreaking about thirty days ago. That's that's EH Green Middle School. Next, I'll move on to the junior high on Cooper Road. Again, mostly going, going to be new, keeping a smaller, the old portion well underway of construction as well. Probably open the end of two thousand and twenty-two. This is our seventh and eighth graders that go to this school. I'll move right along to the high school. Again, another major, mostly internal work going on here, but we're also going to move the stadium from the Cooper Road site to actually the high school site and keep the old stadium for usage. So all in total, a hundred and twenty million dollar bond levy, all this is under construction. I believe it's all complete by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. Also, major expansion in our Sims Elementary School for pre-K, which we also did, I definitely need more of. And that's well underway. I'll keep on moving. Twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, we're a great year for Montgomery. We added about seventeen businesses, seven last year and ten this year, believe it or not, all small businesses, which is a great thing for all of us. We did lose two small businesses during two thousand and twenty, but net add of fifteen is something we cannot complain about. That is for sure. We're very fortunate for that. The backbone of America and quite honestly, the backbone of Montgomery, all of our great small businesses. I know I'm talking fast. By the way, in a short time, we have a lot to cover. So next, we're going to move on to engagement.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to touch on a couple of minutes on our Montgomery Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And this is something that we take extremely serious in Montgomery. We began this in two thousand and eighteen, January two thousand and eighteen, really to promote positive intracultural relations among Montgomery residents and a welcoming environment for all those that live, does it work and recreate in Montgomery. That's really the foundation of this committee. We've done some phenomenal work with this. And we, again, we take it extremely serious in Montgomery. And it's something that's going to be woven in. We're just getting ready to start our next five-year strategic plan for the city of Montgomery. And this will be ingrained into our strategic plan. So it's out in front of us and it will help guide us through the next several years. We really have really grown over the last couple of years. And we started with kind of that kind of train the trainer type of mentality. We formed our committee and then we had folks come in. We had all kinds of educational opportunities to learn about Muslims in America, know your Muslim neighbor, the Asian community, the Hispanic community, African-American community, folks with disabilities, folks with criminal records who are trying to get back into the system. And so we have really done our homework here. And then we took this, what we created what's called a Know Your Neighbor series, where then we took it out to our community and invited others then and to have a conversation. And that's really the premise of what we've done with this. And certainly with the George Floyd incident, it really kind of prompted nationwide, a lot of new discussion. We had a three-part series based on, you know, stamp from the beginning. And two of our committee members really led that, led that conversation. And that's really what it's all about, having conversation in your community and making a difference and making your community an inclusive community where all are welcome. And then just another highlight here with our diversity committee is we're creating a diversity garden that's going to be reflective of the efforts of our committee. And that's going to go on one of our parks. And we usually have a diversity dinner in this area here every fall. So we're creating this beautiful diversity garden that'll be a restroom area that people can go and just reflect and have conversations and be certainly all kinds of different colors of granules and flowers and plants and a couple of benches. And we're just extremely excited about the work we're doing. And we're committed to the work we're doing. And it will be at the forefront of everything we do, whether it be hiring processes, recruitment efforts, minority-owned businesses. We're having conversations about everything that we can do to create that inclusive environment. And then finally, I'm going to finish with the with the door. We touched on that briefly. Like a lot of other communities, we took that opportunity about a year ago to pass a resolution to create a door in this district here in Montgomery. And our recreational staff is currently busy planning some summer activities that will further promote and enhance our businesses downtown. And we're excited about that opportunity as well. And I'm going to kick it back to the mayor to close this out.
Just going back, I was looking at that diversity garden with all those flowers. In my house, the deer have eaten every flower. So I got to think to make sure he puts some deer spray on all those. So those things last, that is for sure. One other item on diversity before we go away. At any one time, we have about fifty-two countries represented in the Sycamore School System with about forty-one languages spoken. So this is all kinds of diversity we have right here in Montgomery and the Sycamore School System. So with that, I'm going to move on to our last slide. And as all of you know, elected officials, we're only as good as the people inside of City Hall, right, and the leadership of our city manager, Brian Riblet. So for the third year in a row, and actually, the third year since Brian's assumed the role of city manager, we have again won the top workplace, which is really done by surveys of your employees, right? As I tell people, I feel very fortunate to have the quality of leadership we have here in City Hall that makes me look good to the community when these guys are doing all the work. So I just can't say enough about all of our staffs, right, who make all this work and bring it all together. So that really concludes. We want to thank you very much for your time. We're happy to answer any questions if you have them, or we could talk all night. I'm not going to do that.
Certainly. Thank you so much for that great presentation. Mayor, how long have you been the mayor in Montgomery?
So I'm going on six years as mayor and twelve years on council.
Okay, okay. Because I can remember meeting you as village manager in Lincoln Heights and thinking about Montgomery. And there's strategic plans that were models for for everyone else in the county. And so when you're strategic like that, then you're building your capital, your infrastructure, your gardens, your diversity committees, they're all intentional because you look at the needs of what's going on, not only in Montgomery, but outside of Montgomery. And I can remember reviewing your strategic strategic plans in Montgomery, and they were something to really learn from. So I'll open it up for my colleagues and see if they have any questions or comments. But it's just an awesome presentation. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor, good to see you again.
I see you as well.
Yes, yes. And certainly you and your city manager, Mr. Manager, this is an awesome presentation. You hit all of the points and gave us a great overview from economic development to how you handle COVID, to education in the schools, to diversity, small business. And then you ended it. And Mayor, I saw you put your hands up. You said, I'm very modest, but we're number one. We're number one place to work, you know, not once, not twice, but three times. So and so we get to throw our hands up as county commissioners, because we represent the whole county, saying, we're number one. So
I could not agree more.
I just want to say, awesome, awesome job. And certainly it was good to see the slide with the small businesses and the feedback from those small businesses, how these dollars from the CARES dollars were able to help directly impact small businesses and residents. And I think it's a great timing as we're looking to go into the American Rescue Dollars. And in there, there's proposed money again for small businesses. So we're seeing how important it is and how it has been able to be helpful. And I just want to say that I came to Montgomery for the first ever reversed parade. You guys are all the parades canceled. And you guys had a reverse parade. And I said, what is the reverse parade? So we showed up and it was a great thing, except all the heat was on us. But it was, it was really good to to meet a lot of the residents in the area. And you guys were very creative. So thank you all so much. It's just one thing that was missing from your, from your presentation. You are the home of number one barbecue in America, Montgomery, and we forgot to put that in there. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you both for the presentation. You know, Montgomery is such a beautiful community. And it's been great to partner with you on so many things, including the the roundabout, which I'm glad is finally, you know, you're finally getting there on that. It's it's going to be a real example, I think, of how we do some traffic calming in other communities. And you guys are leading the way on that. And so it's just, like I said, been a pleasure, especially through COVID, to have you all participate with us to try to keep people safe and you know, keep businesses open. So thank you for the partnership and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And I have to go back to what Vice President Reese was saying about being the number one workplace. And then just more on a personal level, that I can feel as you presented this presentation, and I'm sure your staff can also, your caring, your compassion, your sensitivity, meeting the needs of others. And so that trickles down. So you need to, you guys pat yourselves on the back, as Alicia, Commissioner Reese was saying, but that does trickle down. And that was one great thing that happened through this pandemic is that people became more aware of each other and the needs of each other and giving more. So I hope from the two thousand and twenty tragedies of COVID that we carry that from now on through twenty-one and on. So thank you guys so much for being here.
Thank you as well, Madam President. Commissioner Drehouse, Commissioner Reese, we greatly appreciate the time. And we're glad to be a small part of what the three of you are doing. So we'll do what we can. And we definitely appreciate the partnership and we'll continue to do so.
Well, thank you. And you can, you can stay on if you want for this long meeting, or you can listen, get off whenever you you'd like, okay?
Wonderful. Have a great evening.
Uh huh. All right. Thank you. So we will move forward. Bridget, I was wondering, do we have anyone in the queue for public comments?
Thank you, Madam President. If you would like to comment to commissioners, please raise your hand and we will call on you. If you raise your hand, it's at the bottom of your screen. We'll just give it a second.
Sure.
And we do have one hand raised. Carrie Davis, we are unmuting you on our end. And you can address the board for two minutes.
Hey, y'all. How are you doing? I, by the way, I love these community presentations. I think you guys should string them together, you know, and make it a presentation, because each one I found very informative and uplifting. So I think you guys should string these all together and make it a presentation. It would be a good advertising tool for out-of-area businesses. Just my opinion. But anyway, now to be mean, I'm mad at y'all. I'm cursing y'all. Have we received an opinion back from the prosecutor's office on your powers and authorities yet?
Carrie, what I would suggest is you can contact our county administrator, and he can tell you what he's free to tell you. I think that would probably be the best way to do that.
Okay, well, I'll take that as a no, that there, or you guys would be given an update on it of some sort. I want to say while you guys are kind of kicking the can down the road, I've been asking since, let's see, May nineteenth, no, excuse me, May sixth, I went back to my notes, May sixth, for you guys to intercede on this and to step in legally. And the EPA approved the permit while you guys were waiting. And what that means is it's ten times harder for us now. We have to appeal the permit that was approved for the boundary change. I think you guys were given substantial notice of how important this was. On April twenty-second, Harrison wrote you. On May sixth, Lawrence Berg wrote you. On May seventh, excuse me, May sixth, OXPO wrote you. And that letter was a pretty good legal document. It was signed by two attorneys and five doctors who some are in the environmental field. And they all were essentially saying exactly what I've been trying to say to you all, but you won't let me say. And on May tenth, the Whitewater contacted you all. The seventeenth, an attorney named Mr. Keating contacted you all. On the eighteenth, the Cardinal Land Conservancy contacted you. On the eighteenth, Rivers United contacted you. On May eighteenth, Ohio River Foundation. On May seventeenth, the Board of Commissioners got a response from the EPA, basically telling Ms. Drehouse to jump in a creek, that we're not going to do any public hearings. And the town, the county has sat on their hands, I told you two weeks ago, more than two weeks ago. You know, we don't have a year and a half, we don't have a few months, we have weeks to respond. And since we did not respond, this first permit has been approved. And now we've got a heck of a time ahead of us trying to overturn this permit. It's, which is really difficult.
So I'm trying to think. Touch you off again. I apologize. Your two minutes is up. Maybe you could have kept the good stuff out. And you would have had a little more time. But I appreciate your passion on this issue. And that I will guarantee you, we're not kicking the can down the road. I wish we had time to kick a can. There's so many other things going on. There are really no sweatless victories going. We're sweating, doing the right thing for the people. And so we have to be very strategic and we have to research what we do. And sometimes it may take longer than people want it to take. But I certainly respect your opinion on this matter.
Well, I find that response is unacceptable. I mean, you have to, you have, you have to respond within the legal timeframe that is provided by law. So this appeal, you only have till July third, excuse me, June thirtieth, to appeal this. And if the board is going to be derelict in their duty to respond on behalf of all these organizations, all their members and the residents, I would like you to give us notice. So those of us who have time, I guess, and who think this is important, we will have time to appeal it ourselves. But this is the duty of the board to respond by, to them by June thirtieth, or we have lost, then our rights are gone. then our rights are gone.
Well, thank you for that affirmation. Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam President, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to comments and motions by the commissioners. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. And I know you'll probably go more into detail with your comments, but I just wanted to, to say to you, a very good job today in putting together the first time recognizing Juneteenth event for Hamilton County. And it's just a big day, on the same day, the President of the United States, Joe Biden, signs the, for first time ever, national holiday. And so it was just great to be with you and Commissioner Dreehouse today in a historic way, doing something very historic. So I know you're going to talk a little bit more about that, but I just wanted to certainly give you kudos for your work today on that as well. Also wanted to say that this weekend, there's a lot of activities, but our, our bus, our temporary bus will be ready to go. It is wrapped and ready to go. Our Equity and Resource One Stop Bus will be out at about this Saturday. People can come by and see it. It's at 3:00 PM at the Esoteric Brewery, which is really nice. It's on Macmillan. They're hosting a Mobile Black Wall Street Festival in honor of Juneteenth. And we will be there. It is on 918 East Macmillan. We'll be there at 3:00 PM. People can get to see it. They'll be able to get the vaccine shot. They also will be able to apply and find out about all of the resources that we have available for people to help folks. So Jobs and Family Services will be there with that. And I just want to thank the administration, Jeff and Ayesha, Holly and Bridgette and everyone, the prosecutor's office, everyone, UC Health to get this up and going. So I just, I'm just excited about it. It'll be this Saturday. And people are encouraged to come and join us at 3:00 PM and it'll be a fun event. It won't be anything boring. You'll be able to have fun as well and bring the entire family. So that's what I wanted to make sure that was mentioned today. And that's, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to recognize that we had a great celebration today in honor of Juneteenth and congratulate you on that. Victoria Parks as well and Commissioner Reese also. It was a nice collaborative effort. And we also stood together on the banks a couple of days ago and celebrated the beautiful outside space for the music venue down at the banks. And so we have had a lot to celebrate collectively. And I've been, you know, grateful to be part of that. Also, I have had the pleasure of visiting some of the high-tech homes for people with special needs. Alice's house was one. And then Lad has a high-tech home as well, where people with special needs can live independently because of some of the technology that's been incorporated in these homes. And so I know we're going to be talking a lot about housing. And I want to make sure that we keep people with special needs on our radar as we work through some of those dollars that we're going to commit to new housing in the county. So I was, it's just been fun to go on some tours again. We're out and about. We've been in way too long. It's just nice to get out a little bit. And also, I know Commissioner Reese, you also attended the JFS High School graduation that was at Washington Park for kids that are in the foster care system who have graduated from high school. And every year, JFS celebrates those kids and their families. And so it was fun to meet them. It was fun to hear their stories and congratulate them on the special honor of graduating from high school. So glad to attend that for JFS. And then lastly, I attended the JCC Under the Ten Event, standing in solidarity with folks in the Jewish community here in Hamilton County. There is a lot of unease, you know, a lot of violent rhetoric happening in our community and in other communities related to the Jewish community. And so they had an event to remind people of that struggle and the struggle continues. And so I was grateful that they had that event and it was really well attended. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You guys brought up basically what I was going to say. I decided not to go through everything. We've done a lot of ribbon cutting and digging at the Cincinnati Zoo. And so it's been, I'm tired of really seeing myself on television. It's like, all of us have been so active and so involved. Wanted to say a moment about, Vice President Reese brought up about Juneteenth and the celebration today was beyond my expectation because we were wondering who would come. Would we be the only ones there? We had a great crowd. You could feel the unity in the air and the importance of the moment. This Juneteenth celebration actually began in 2019. And Commissioner Dreehouse and Todd was a part of that. So it actually, this journey started in 2019. We moved forward very quickly with a holiday. And then this flag raising, there was no necessity to do that. But we thought it was important enough to bring that much attention to the occasion and have a moment of silence and all of those things. Because when I first came in 2019, and I'm not going to go all into it, I noticed a lack of attention to the African-American culture and what we bring to the table historically. And so I immediately started with the Black History Month. I immediately started with the Juneteenth month. And then, as you were saying, Commissioner Dreehouse, that Commissioner Parks brought a resolution forward after we had decided to celebrate Juneteenth, which was fine. And so now we have a holiday and everybody can really spend some time really reflecting on that. But this was a long journey and it started when I first came. And so I'm glad that we all were, were a part of it and we'll be together next year. I'll be there at least for one more celebration. But I think it's important and I think that's what happens when you bring a diversity to the commission. You bring a different flavor. You, you bring a different tone. You bring a different awareness. And I think that's what's happened. And so our board as a whole has moved forward, all three of us, in that direction. I think that's one of the greatest things that, this is not my, I'm not, but this is what I really remember, that everybody jumped on board with it and to, to know that we're all part of this whole picture. So thank you all. I'll, I'll leave it at that. So I was just very touched and we all were very touched with what happened. So we'll move forward. And I want to thank the staff, Bridgette, and then Holly kind of reminded me about, do we have a flag? And then facilities were just, anything we asked for, they, they did. So I just want to thank those people that were behind the scenes. So we'll move forward with Jeff Aludor, our county administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. So just no comment, but just a couple of by leaves this evening. The first is labeled as by leave one in your packet. This is a resolution reimbursing county employees for loss compensation who were furloughed, who are, who may have experienced reduced hours and/or wage reductions from the 2020 savings plan implemented in response to the COVID-19 virus. So this goes back to 2020 and the implementation of the 2021 budget, when we programmed $350,000 into that budget to make employees who were furloughed or who received reductions in pay or, or, or lost hours up to, whole, up to 1.5% of their salary after any unemployment that they also may have received. And to provide bonus pay of, up to $1,000 for specific employees who went above and beyond the call to help the public and the organization during COVID-19. That was done on a cooperative across the, across the board basis with all independent departments and agencies as well. So as we implemented that, we realized that with just a modest additional sum, we could make those employees entirely whole. Initially, the policy was to go up to 1.5% of salary and we budgeted $350,000. All of that was done because we just didn't know, at the end of the day, wanted to make sure that we capped it. We didn't know what our ultimate exposure was. And realized that with, again, just a modest increase to that amount that we would be able to make everyone whole. So in total, we're looking at a total of 437,250 as opposed to the 350,000. So in total, there were 397 employees in seven different departments who were furloughed or lost compensation as a result of, of reduction in hours. Of that 397, 309 were made whole for their lost compensation by reimbursements that were equal to the 1.5% or less. And then we had 88 additional lost compensation employees that exceeded the 1.5%. So at the end of the day, the, the total average of reimbursement to those 397 employees totals approximately $920 over that period. So, so at the, again, at the end of the day, the purpose of the, of the recommendation is to go just a bit above where we had budgeted at 350, just to make sure that we can make all of these employees whole. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions. We also have Frank Spataro on, if there's some additional questions as well.
Thanks, Jeff. So the ones that did not qualify to be made whole, can you tell me why they, I know why, but so we can explain that. Of the 397, you said there were 307 that were made whole. So the ones that were not, they were in unemployment and they actually made more than they would have made if they were furloughed. Is that correct?
Yeah. So we, we did not, we were not providing any reimbursement if folks were made whole through unemployment. But then we had a set of employees that were made whole up to that 1.5%. And then some who experienced additional wage loss over and above that and were not made whole through, through unemployment. And those would be the ones that we are now going back to make sure that we are making those employees whole. In addition to the, the special assignment pay that we also allocated of up to $1,000 per employee. And I think there were 96 employees who received those special assignment bonuses.
Thanks. I just wanted you to bring up about the unemployment element of it. So I'll pass on Vice President Reese. Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Dreehouse.
No, I just want to commend the administration for bringing this to us. I mean, I think it's really important that we recognize the, the work and some of the challenges and suffering that our employees went through. So thank you, Jeff, for bringing this up.
Thank you also. I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Ms. Sumra Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. By leave two.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave two, I'm going to turn over to Assistant Administrator Holly Christman to talk about one of the programs that we are implementing for essentially navigational assistance for small businesses. So Holly, would you like to introduce by leave two, please?
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Good evening, I should say. I'm really excited to, to discuss this by leave item with you today. I know we've talked about it for a few months and we're excited to, to bring it forward to you today. So what you had before you is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement with the National Development Council to provide small business technical assistance and navigation assistance to those small businesses that were impacted by COVID-19. This contract is an amount not to exceed $500,000. It will be reimbursement based on expenses. And just so everyone is aware, I know we've talked about this, the board back in March and May amended our CARES plan to allow for this type of program. This is a result of an RFP that we worked with purchasing on. And this will allow us to get started on that small business assistance program. And some of the, the types of assistance that they will provide are, would be awareness of and access of grants or loans that may be available. They would, they would also help small businesses if they need help with submitting those applications, whether it's helping to answer questions about the application or actually providing any technology or access to technology to upload applications, for example. They'll also help provide technical assistance on any adjustments to business plans, to help enhance revenue, to do any sort of, like I said, loan applications to help them make sure they're aware of any compliance issues. I mean, it really runs the gamut to what sort of businesses may need assistance. Again, it's targeted to our small businesses who we've seen, as you all know, more than, more than me, over the past year, have really struggled. And we're honored to bring this forward to you today to, to help provide even more additional assistance. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I don't have any questions. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a question, but I do want to make a comment. Certainly, I think this is definitely needed. When we hosted the Relief-a-thon, we got a chance to get a printout. Each of us got a printout of where the calls, what were people really asking. And of course, number one was rental assistance. But number two, almost 40% of the calls that came in were for small business, people having questions. People might see something on the news or they see something online and they say, "Well, how do you get this?" Or they missed the deadline because they're just finding out about it. And you're trying to keep your business open, but you, you know, you don't have time to watch TV all day because you're trying to keep the doors open. So I think that this will definitely be helpful. I know this is something that all three of us supported and I'm glad to see it get started so that we can kind of be a connector to everything, whether it's the county having, you know, our $4 million or what have you for small businesses, or maybe it's somebody else that has a program, or maybe it's the restaurant program that the federal government has, but you don't know how to navigate it. And you don't have time to have assistance, paralegals, and all those things because you are a small business. So I'm, I'm excited about this and looking forward to seeing the data. It also helps us see the data of who called, who was helped, what were the questions. And that helps us even in the future when we look at other, you know, other funding issues, we can see what the needs are. So I'll certainly support this and looking forward to it getting moving very quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah. Thanks, Madam President. And yeah, I, I think this will be a big help for the small businesses that we're having some trouble navigating. Holly, can you tell us how many organizations responded to the RFP? Do you know that?
I want to say four.
Okay.
Just, just to know how many organizations offer this kind of thing? Because we've also got something similar, which is the back office support for small businesses in the American Rescue Plan. And I just want to just get a better sense of how many organizations are out there that do this kind of thing that offer the support to small business. So I'm glad to hear there were as many as four.
I'll verify that. It was, it was no more than four. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Second.
Ms. Sumra Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Okay. We'll move forward. On our regular agenda, we have our engineer, Eric Beck is here this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Have three items tonight. Item number one is a resolution approving the 2021 Municipal Road Fund. The board held a hearing on this May 27 and heard comments on it. This is the actual resolution approving of the 11 projects that are above the, the funding limit. Those 11 projects represent projects in 10 different communities in the amount of $2,103,993.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Ms. Sumra Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The second item is a resolution awarding the contract to the lowest and best bidder, W.E. Smith Construction for the River Road Landslide Improvement located in Crosby Township. The engineer's estimate was $569,000. The low bid was $470,508.63, which is 17% lower engineer's estimate.
Thank you. So normally, Eric, our engineers bid, we normally go. Thank you. So normally, um Eric, our engineers bid, do we normally go a little higher or it depends on the project or what?
We like to be the middle bidder. Uh we like to have our engineer's estimate somewhere in the middle of what our contractors are. Um this one, uh we are, came in lower than our estimate. Next project we have came a little bit over.
Okay.
We're a lot, we're allowed to award contracts up to ten percent over.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Um hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item two uh two.
Thank you.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three is the resolution awarding the contract to the lowest and best bidder Dad's Bobcat Service for the twenty twenty-one sidewalk repair replacement program located in various uh townships through the county. Um again, this one, the engineer's estimate was sixty-six thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars. And the bid was just a little bit over that at sixty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. And uh I did wanted to note that uh Dad's Bobcat Service is a WBE. Um so we we appreciate her bidding.
That's great.
Thank you. Uh any questions or comments?
No.
It's an interesting name for a WBE, but.
It is, yeah.
I was thinking that, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number three.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
You Commissioners.
Our next item under MSD is item number four.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Glad to be here with you this evening. Jack Rennecamp, uh Division Manager for the Office of Director with MSD. I'm here tonight to prevent, present for um requests for sewer construction projects and then report on one um project that needs to be entered into the Commissioners' uh minutes. Items four through seven are requests uh from MSD to uh ask the board to approve construction funding for four sewer lateral assessment projects. These uh projects will provide construction of public sewer laterals at the respective locations and provide public, public sewer services to residential parcels that are presently not connected to any public sewer. They're connected to household sewage treatment systems or colloquially, we call those onsite systems. Um these requests follow both the Ohio Revised Code and MSD Rules and Regulations for Sewer Assessments. In terms of detail, all four properties have access to existing public sewers. And the Hamilton County Public Health Department has ordered all four of them to connect to the the respective public sewers. Those orders is being issued between September of twenty twelve and May of twenty seventeen. All four property owners have executed what is termed as petitions and waivers uh requesting to be connected to these public sewers. And this is in compliance with both Ohio law um and as well as MSD Rules and Regulations governing this particular action. And uh it also, as part of these waivers and petitions, the property owners agree that they would be specially assessed for their cost um of connecting to public sewers, which under um our rules and regulations is no more than twelve thousand dollars for the public, their portion of the public improvement. As you know, um MSD pays for the balance of that public improvement, all costs above that twelve thousand dollar threshold. Um two of the uh the uh properties of the the um Mason Road and Care Cemetery Road lateral sewer assessments are located in Sims Township. Uh and the Asbury Road lateral assessment is located within uh Anderson Township. Um and as I noted, all four properties will remove HSTSs um from being in existing use as per Health Department orders to these property owners. Uh each parcel or each property and each project has a different cost. Um they total, in total, they sum two hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. That's the total of the requests. The individual requests are seventy, seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars for um the Mason Road Sewer um as well as at at property hu- house number twelve sixteen um and sixty-three, sixty-one thousand three hundred dollars for the Mason Road Sewer at property house number eleven nine eighty-six. Um the ki- the Asbury Road Sewer lateral uh is estimated to cost seventy-seven thousand dollars and the Care Cemetery Roads or Laterals estimated to cost sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um just as I, as I note, the uh MSD credit for these uh four parcels and these four projects are um between eighty to eighty-four percent of the total project costs and the property owners are paying at twelve thousand dollars each between sixteen to twenty percent of the total project costs. If you have any questions on those four, uh before I go on to item number eight, be happy to entertain any.
Okay, Jack, thank you. It's such a great summary. Um and since I did not give you a format of how I'd like for us to do it, I won't have you repeat anything because you you gave a a great summary. So I'll just go through each one individually, just naming it and what the cost is. So um so the item number four, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number four, which is Mason Road Sewer seventy-two thousand five hundred. You're muted.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number five, Asbury Road Sewer for seventy-seven thousand, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number six, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Care Cemetery Road Sewer for sixty-seven thousand.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number seven, Mason Road Sewer for sixty-one thousand three hundred, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Jack, if you could just tell us about item number eight?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
The item eight is the report of a failed local sewer petition for Marwick Lane, Mayview, Forest Place, and Grove Road. Um this uh particular petition was requested uh by property, by one or more property owners within that area. It wa- it would have benefited fifty-two parcels. However, based upon a March twenty twenty-one uh petition, only seventeen of the fifty-two parcels supported the project's progress, which is about thirty-two percent. That's below the threshold of MSD Rules and Regulations uh requirement of uh an absolute majority or colloquially interpreted as fifty percent plus one. Um one parcel opposed it, thirty-four chose not to respond to the petition, which is sixty-five percent. Um so there has not been an absolute majority. And the request uh from MSD is for entering this this petition um into the board's record as a failed petition.
Thank you so much, Jack. Um I'd like to make a, oh, any questions or comments? No? I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record the uh failed petition.
Oh, second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, Jack.
Thank you, Commissioners, and have a great evening.
Okay, you too. So um we will move forward with our consent agenda items. Um and um our consent agenda items for adoption um is item eleven through twenty-four. I'll just do a little summary. Well, not, I don't know how little, but I made it as short as I could. And then we have a couple consent agenda items. So for adoption, item eleven through twenty-four, we have a budget adjustment uh for capital projects. Um and item number twelve is a resolution appropriate appropriating fifty-three point two million in grants following the state fiscal year starting in July one, twenty twenty-one. Item thirteen is authorizing an agreement between recruitment strategies on behalf of the Sheriff's Office for Consulting for Staffing Audits and Other Communication, which is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Item fourteen, authorizing the purchase of two uh twenty twenty-one Dodge Charger police vehicles as replacements in the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office for forty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then there's another uh replacement of a Dodge in the Sheriff's Office. And then uh replacement of a crew cab uh Hamilton and for the Hamilton County Planning and Development Department for a hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars, which I do have a question about. I'll bring up uh in a minute. And item number seventeen, uh Airmark Correctional Services is going to, is going to provide food services, food and services uh to juvenile court for four hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the first year. Item eighteen is to document uh redaction software uh application um through the Sattler Software Application, which is two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And item nineteen is uh twenty twenty-one Toyota additional um car for, in behalf of Hamilton County Environmental Services. Item twenty is the total bids and awards and contracts that were authorized um by JFS uh in the, I'm sorry, yeah, the Purchasing Department for May of twenty twenty-one for eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And item twenty-one is adoption of the Parental Leave uh Act uh which comes through our Personnel Policy Manual. Um the last one that I have is uh the last two. Item number two uh twenty-two is authorization of the Urban League in behalf of the Department of JFS for a micro certification, which we had a uh staff meeting about that for eight hundred thousand dollars. And item twenty-three is um two zoning amendments. Uh item twenty-three and actually item twenty-four. Um so that was a kind of short brief, but I thought people needed to know uh what were actually so many um consent agenda items. I had a question and I'll open it up for my colleagues. Um item sixteen, and Jeff, maybe you can answer this for me. Uh the crew cab um that that we're getting for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. I know the funding is through the Water Rotary Fund, but I'm just wondering what's, is this a specialized crew cab, obviously, uh because it's so expensive? If someone could answer that for me, what does it offer?
Sorry, Commissioner, I was muted. Uh so that that's correct. The the funding is uh out of our Water Rotary Fund um for this particular truck. And this is a truck that uh is a replacement uh specifically for um the process of of assisting with fire hydrant replacements. So one of the things that our Planning and Development Field Crew does is um manage over ten thousand fire hydrants um in the unincorporated and even some incorporated areas of the of the county. Uh and so this is the uh, this is one of the trucks that helps transport the equipment, helps load, loads the equipment and assist with that replacement process when we have a hydrant taken out of service or one that needs to be repaired, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh my other question was um item seventeen was, which is Airmark Correctional Services for the Juvenile Court providing the food. And I think it's more uh of a general question that we can look at later, possibly. I know Airmark has been in existence. I know I was a teenager working for them. Um but we signed for one year for four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars and a possibility of four more years uh according to the graph. And just wondering, and it goes back to what we're saying about small businesses. And I know that a small business cannot provide all the food that needs to be given for juvenile court. But at some point, looking at a small business that can provide food that could be a subcontractor, or maybe they could provide some of the food, I don't know, twice a a week instead of Airmark doing the entire um contract, because um how we we are helping the small businesses, but how can we put our hand out to help some of the ones that are in the field that Airmark is in? They're a giant company. And I know when you put the bids out, there are only so many companies that can provide what we need according to the specifications. But if some way we could cut down um what we're doing and 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 I'll, and I won't be repetitive, but have a smaller food company, maybe just do it once a month or something like that. So that's not something, Jeff, you can answer now. And it sounds like, you know, we need to prove it for this year. But as I looked at the fact that there are four more years that could possibly come forth that we would have to sign, um then if we can just kind of think about how to break down, even if it was a janitorial business and we gave a big contractor, some big janitorial company um that can provide all the services, can they possibly sub um li- not sublease, but use other smaller businesses to provide janitorial? I don't know, twice, twice a month. So that's the only way we can help these small businesses. Because if we make our RFPs so big and so huge that small businesses can't meet them, we'll you know, we won't get where I know this board wants to go and I know where you want to go, Jeff. So I, it's it's an editorial.
Yeah, no, uh thank, thank you for for that, Madam President. And I um I I appreciate the the comments on it. Uh and you're you're correct, there were three bidders on this. I don't think that we had an SBE uh bid on it, but as you indicate, maybe just the nature um of the work and the way the RFP is is or the ITB is structured. So um one thing we can do is that we can have um uh our uh uh Office of Economic Inclusion Equity, Robert Bell, uh reach out to um uh the administration over at Juvenile Court and see as they move forward, if there's a way that we might be able to to craft that that procurement a little bit differently to to break it up. Um I I don't know the answer to that at this point, but we can reach out and have that conversation. So I'm happy to do that.
Certainly appreciate it. Um so I'll open it up for additional comments on any items that I listed. Uh Vice President Reese?
Uh yes, thank you, Madam President. I wanna um stay with item number seventeen and I just wanted to ask a another additional question. It says it can go up to four years. So will this go back out to bid? Or?
Uh so uh Madam Vice President, I believe uh this is for one year with four optional renewals, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Um and so I think at that point, it would be up to the department as to whether they would want to go back out to bid on any one of those years. It would be um uh it would, it would be up to typically when we write ITVs in this manner, it would be uh based upon it would ultimately be at the discretion of the department as to whether or not they would want to go back out to bid or not. Just how the uh uh the economics uh current, whether the economics favor uh going out to bid again or staying with the current vendor. So it provides the department with flexibility in that respect.
Yes, thank you. So my question is, though, in terms of us voting on this, if we wanted to, I think some of the um information that President Dumas put out and certainly um I've dealt with Airmark as well. Um and usually they give you the bare minimum unless you you know, if you start talking about inclusion, then they find it. Or they even have job training programs, which I'd like to see uh in some other states where they actually, when they get the contract, they're training people when they come out, they can get a job particularly with them. So I just don't have enough time to delve into this. But wouldn't that be, would that be somehow up to us? Or if we vote for this, we're stuck for potentially four years? Because I don't know if I want to be stuck for four years with this contract.
Well, uh yeah, so if you if you vote for it, you you're certainly voting for um the initial con- contract of of year one and then ultimately um the uh the uh the court, the the uh the contracting agency in this particular case uh would have the ability to recommend um uh to the county uh and typically the way that works is on renewals. The administrator is authorized with the ability to sign off on a renewal if that's recommended by uh by the court administrator. So um all I can say to the board at this point is that, yes, if you approve the contract, you would be approving um the option to go back out for for four years. What I would say to the board um is this may be one of those areas where we could work with the court uh to see if there are additional options uh for small business inclusion um in the contract. Um we have not looked at this specific area, so um I don't have an answer for you on that, but um I think that would be the the process that we would go through is to work with court administration to see whether that was possible in the industry, what that might look like, what look, what the local vendor situation is like. And then determine whether, once we have that information, whether a renewal would be in the best interest of the county or whether putting it back out to bid, given that new environment.
Madam President, and when does this contract end? And I apologize because when I, it's, this, this one had a lot of thick,
Right.
big contracts, I mean, and pages and pages and pages. So I just want to make sure, I don't want to, I, I guess the thing is, you know, we vote today, we vote for this, then the power is away from us. It's in the hands of the Juvenile Court if they want to continue with them without our input. So once we vote today, our input is over, per se, from a voting, you know, power position. So I just wanted to make sure because this is blocking us in like four years. So I don't know. I, I think that's the thing that I kind of wanted to, you know, find out that that came to mind.
I don't know. A year from what date, Jeff?
Yeah, the, the term of the contract is, it ends, I believe on, it would end on February 28, 2022 is the initial term unless terminated, unless terminated earlier. And, and yeah, the, it, it has, it's the county's option as to whether or not to, to exercise those four renewals. And there, I believe there's a 90-day termination clause if the, if the county wanted to terminate the agreement.
And Jeff, the, the contract that they currently have right now, I don't know if it's with them or someone else, when does that end? Is that ending like next week or next month or?
I don't know that specifically, but I know that this contract, the contract term on this says that it commences on May 1. So that tells me that they are probably into an extension period on the existing contract and that this contract would go retroactive then to May 1 and that they're into some extension period right now.
Okay. I'll move on from 17. I had a couple other just quick questions. One is on the, the environmental vehicle, this Toyota Camry, is this one of those, I know we're looking at investing in those more environmentally friendly cars. Is that one of, is that one of these cars or is this a regular gas car?
I don't know, Holly, I don't, I don't know if Holly is on, if Holly has information on whether this is a hybrid vehicle or not. I know this is an inspection vehicle for Environmental Services. I also know that Environmental Services is looking to invest, they're doing the work right now to invest in electric charging stations out at the Environmental Services lot. So they are looking to go longer term towards more environmentally friendly vehicles. Environmental Services has typically been a leader in that area, looking at hybrid vehicles, even natural gas vehicles, et cetera. I don't know whether this one is a hybrid or not. Holly, do you have that information by chance?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's a hybrid. It's a, it's a traditional vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my last question was on the $375,000 consulting contract in the Sheriff's Office. Can you highlight that may stick out to some people? It said some office staffing and communications.
Yeah, I believe this is a, a contract through the County Sheriff for consulting services related to staffing and organizational work in the, in the HR area as well as communications and community engagement, specifically community engagement work and a consultant to help with communications and community engagement. In addition to looking at some restructuring and staffing options in the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And that would be coming out of her budget, Jeff?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to highlight item number 21, which is the parental leave item that we are passing. It, it's taken us some time to get this to where we are today. We've all had some input on this one. And I just want to say that I view this as a part of a collective effort to make sure that our employees are respected, paid well, and that they want to stay with the county. And, you know, we, we are, you know, we passed a resolution to make sure we're paying $15 an hour at least to our county employees. We've passed a resolution to make sure that we provide health insurance within the first 30 days of employment instead of what was 90 days. You know, we, we've done some things to try to move the county forward. We've given pay raises recently in the recent years. We didn't used to do that. And so I find this one to be part of that message that we at the county are very appreciative of the service of our county employees and want to make sure that those that work for us and those that would like to join the, the ranks know that we respect them and we're going to do what we can to make sure that those that become new parents, whether it's through the birth of a child or adoption, have the time they need for, for that special experience in their lives. So I'm super excited about item number 21. I think it's a really big deal for the county. And again, thank the administration, especially those in HR that helped us as we offered feedback, get to this to where we needed to be. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just one final comment. Jeff, on 17 again, how long has Airmark been contracted? I just have a feeling that they've been around for a while with them also. Do you have any idea?
Madam President, no, I do not. I have the, the proposed contract in front of me. I do not have anything that shows the, the historic term of Airmark at, at Juvenile Court. I can find that out and provide that to you on Monday.
Okay, and that's fine. I, I didn't necessarily want to vote against it and I won't because there's definitely a need for the food at Juvenile Court. But I think what we did was shine the light on some issues that maybe have not been brought up before. And unfortunately, a vast majority of those young people in Juvenile Court are African Americans. And so maybe, and I'm not saying to make it nice and good that they want to stay there and have the best food, but I'm just saying being culturally sensitive too, because I don't know if Airmark is. And nothing against them. They, you know, like I said, I work for them. But I think all, what we did hopefully is to shine a light on our expectations just in general as it relates to all kinds of issues. So I'm real happy about the discussion. No further items coming forward or no further discussion, I would like to make a motion to receive for the record item number nine and item number 10.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And now I'd like to make a motion to adopt items 11 through 24.
Madam President?
Yes.
I, I'll second the motion. Good. We're in the middle of a motion, so I'll second.
It's okay.
Oh, I was just going to say, I wanted to make sure on the record administrator, we're, I'm moving forward with this with great hesitancy on item number 17. I would hope that, I'm going to go beyond hope. I want it noted that before this goes for renewal, that we'll get another, a, a report on where we are with these issues that were raised today. I am a little uncomfortable given Card Block four years, four more years of status quo. So I hope that we can have in 12 months or whatever, so many months, come back and we get another shot at this contract and hopefully it's improved.
Thank you. And really, as I made the motion, I should ask for a discussion, even though we discussed in general. But I had made a motion, so it was time for a discussion. So with no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items 11 through 24.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay. No further business to come before the Commission. Enjoy your holiday.
Oh, wait, I got a, a D and I'm sorry.
Okay.
I forgot to say this. I want to say Happy Father's Day to my father and all the fathers and fathers that are no longer with us as well, want to just celebrate. I know we always do it for the moms.
Right.
And we want to get some equity to the dads, so.
Very good. Awesome. Thank you for remembering that. Okay. Well, have, have a good evening, Drehouse.
Do we have an executive session?
Oh. I was trying to see if you guys were gonna notice it, you know, so. You're on it. I wanted to make sure. I'm keeping you on your toes. Okay.
So can I, can I also ask a question of the administration before we go into executive session? So Jeff, I don't know if, what the governor has done related to the state of emergency lifting that impacts our ability to continue to meet virtually. So I was just wondering if our next meeting, which still falls in the month of June, has to be in person. I just am curious.
Madam President, Commissioner Drehouse, I believe, so the governor has lifted the state of emergency. However, I believe that the prior, that there was legislative action that was taken that provides counties and, and public authorities with the ability to meet through the end of June virtually. So I don't think the governor's action eliminates that, but we will, we will confirm that and make sure that we advise the Board and the clerk accordingly on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm pretty sure it doesn't either. But you know, Commissioner Drehouse, you've been wanting to get in that room.
I know.
You can go, I want everybody to go in forth together. So if you want to have your meeting in there, you certainly can. I just, when we first go, I want the residents to come in at the same time, but that's, that's just my thought, but we can look into it.
I just don't want to run afoul of the, the legislature at this moment in time.
Right, right. Yeah, I sort of asked that same question, but it's good to ask again, clarify. Since he made, since the governor just made another announcement and stuff. Okay. So I'd like to, at this point, make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G for regarding collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.